Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Edina School Board. I'm Debbie McNeil, President of the League of Women Voters Edina. We are the sponsors of the forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization. We encourage informed and active participation by citizens in their government. While the League does do studies and we take stands on issues, we do not support candidates or political parties. The views expressed at this forum will be those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. And the fact that we're sponsoring this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It's now my pleasure to introduce the moderator of tonight's forum, Alice Mormon of the League of Women Voters Minneapolis.
Thank you, Debbie. Before we get started, I'd like everyone to turn off your cellphone and please do that right now. Thank you. The purpose of this evening's forum is to provide an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss the issues that are important to you. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time we have. If your questions are not addressed tonight, feel free to contact the candidates directly. All candidates who filed for office and will be on the November 5th ballot were invited to this forum. I'd now like to explain the rules of the forum and the format. Speaking order was assigned before the forum and will rotate with each question. Each candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement and one minute to answer a question sent out in advance. Candidates will then have 45 seconds to answer questions submitted by the audience and then finally a one-minute closing statement. This forum will include a lightning round. Each candidate will be asked a different question drawn at random and be asked to give a brief one-sentence answer. A League volunteer will time candidate responses and indicate to candidates when they have 30 seconds remaining and when they must stop. And they're right there in the front, candidates. Audience questions must be in writing and handed to a volunteer who is wearing a League button. The moderator will ask all questions. The League of Women Voters of Edina determines which questions will be asked and attempts, in good faith, to cover the topics of interest indicated by the submitted audience questions. All written questions become the property of the League of Women Voters Edina. This forum is being videotaped. Please hold your applause until the end of the forum. So first, we will have each of the candidates and I will introduce you to them and then we'll assign them their one minute. In order, we have Mark Sparano, Gail Castro, Regina Neville, Lisa O'Brien, Danielle Busby, Randy Meyer, Lionel Dorville, Vivian Talgater, and David Goldstein. The order of the first one-minute opening remark will be in the order of where you're seated now. So we will start with Mark.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you, League of Women Voters. I just want to say I've used the League of Women Voters ever since I was a registered voter in multiple states, so I appreciate you hosting this forum. Before I get into my introduction, I just want to declare a minor victory for the Edina Public School District. I mean, the current board and all the candidates here, great roster, and I think it just goes to the strength of our independent public school board, and I'm very happy. What I need to do is convince you folks tonight, because I'm neither tall, dark, or handsome, about my passion and my relevancy from my personal experiences and my work experiences, how I could bring that to the school board, and that's what I hope to accomplish today. Thank you for having me.
Good evening. My name is Gail Castro. I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here and allowing us this opportunity. I'm a native Minnesotan and a product of the public school system. I look forward tonight to answering your questions and hopefully I can convince you that with my strong business background, my strong sales background, that you could see a place for me on the Edina School Board. What I hope to do in serving on the Edina School Board really is bring my passion and my dedication and my vested interest in the future success of these schools to light. So again, thank you.
Hi, I'm Regina Neville. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening's forum and I'd like to thank the community for the opportunity to have served for a first school board term for Edina Schools. In the past four years, I've had an opportunity to become more familiar with all of our school sites and to address advancing learning for all of our students. As a board member, I've approved resources for math and reading specialists and supported the development of the secondary and birth through grade-five studies. My personal background is in nonprofit arts management and education. I've taught in university classrooms. I hold a current Minnesota teaching license and I've worked as a Success Center teacher in Edina Schools. I've had the opportunity to support Edina education at every grade level, as a member of numerous district committees, and most importantly, as a parent to my three children. It's an honor to run for a second term, and I ask for your vote on November 5th.
Next candidate.
Hi, my name is Lisa O'Brien. Thank you for having me. My passion is kids. My educational, professional, and volunteer career has always revolved around children and families. My PhD in child development and child clinical psychology, my research with at-risk children, my volunteer work through Greater Minneapolis Crisis Nursery, all of these things have really inspired me and informed me in working with children from all areas of life, from all SES levels, from all backgrounds, and from all ability levels. I have been fortunate, when my children started school, to be able to be in the classroom, and that is what really inspired me to get more involved in the public schools and in the school board. So my goal is to ensure that every child that comes into our district has the best education that we can provide and has the best access to all the services that we have. Thank you.
Next candidate.
My name is Danielle Busby, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. I am humbled to be here. This journey has been very fruitful, trying to learn all the nuances of the school board and also learning all the needs and critical issues that are presented for us in the community and from us. And hopefully, I'm just looking forward to this opportunity of being able to share a little bit more about myself today. Thank you.
Next candidate.
Good evening. I'm Randy Meyer. It's a privilege to be here. Thank you for the League for hosting this event tonight. It's been a privilege to serve the district over the past 12 years. We have the opportunity on an ongoing basis to carefully move the district forward while also recognizing the great foundation our predecessors have built for us. It's important to understand that ultimately, education is doing what's right for kids, which ties perfectly into our all-for-all strategic plan we recently completed. It's been an honor also to serve the board as the chair the past six years. It's been a privilege my peers have allowed me to do, and I look forward to tonight's discussion. I'm also thrilled that we've got a strong group of candidates running for board because it is an important role. Thank you.
Next candidate.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters Edina, community at large and community present. I'm living the American dream. First-generation U.S., moved to Edina, wanted to give my family a better opportunity and access towards equitable education. I have also been in the role as a guardian to older youth in the high school level, and I noticed there's some equity and access issues that are real prevalent in the community that is so rich and so strong in giving, and I just want to continue that continuum for equal access for all youth within the system. Thank you.
Next candidate.
Hello, and thank you all for being here. My name is Vivian Talgater, and like everyone else here, I am running for the school board. My husband and I have four children, all currently in Edina Public Schools. A fourth grader at Creek Valley Elementary, sixth and ninth graders at Valley View Middle School, and a senior at Edina High School. With children at every school level, I have a good perspective of how the district is doing educating Edina kids. Furthermore, I have been an active Edina Public Schools volunteer at both the school and district level, having participated on numerous committees as well as serving as Creek Valley PTA co-president, Valley View Middle School Site Council President, and Edina Public Schools Parent Council Co-Chair. I hold a doctorate in Electrical Engineering from the University of California, Berkeley, and have been working at Seagate Technology for the last 16 years. I hope that by the end of the evening, I will have convinced you that I have the qualifications to be an effective board member. Thank you.
Next candidate.
Thank you. My wife and I are 20-year residents of Edina. My oldest son is a 2013 Edina High School graduate, now at Luther College. My middle son is a senior. My daughter is in ninth grade. We've been involved in the school since their birth, and the school and this community have been very good to us. I'm running because I would very much like to pay forward what the community has given to us and because I think by my professional and other experiences, I'm well-qualified for the job. I've been a lawyer for over 25 years. I've represented public school districts. I'm familiar with the issues. I've devoted a lot of time to nonprofit organizations, including organizations devoted to generational poverty and racial issues. But most importantly, I've spent the last 20 some-odd years talking to people here, listening to people, watching their kids grow up. It's all very fresh with me, and I'd like to be a part of being a solution to our challenges. Thank you.
Next, we're going to have the candidates answer the question that was sent out in advance. We're also going to rotate the way they answer the questions. So I will first read the name of the candidate, and none of us will know who's going to answer next until you hear the name. So, and they will have one minute to answer this question. The question that was sent out is, what particular issue or issues motivated you to run for school board and why? And we'll direct that first to Regina Neville.
Research Professor Renee Brown says that-
Stories are data with a soul, and I'm motivated to serve on the Edina School Board to connect the stories of our community with the data that informs our decision. The goal is to make a positive change for students at all levels. When I taught Success Center in the Edina Elementary Schools, I celebrated the brave accomplishments that many of the students were able to make, but I also recognized that the intervention available at that time was not meeting the needs of all students, and that was not okay. By serving on the school board, I'm able to affect policy that supports the change that's needed for our students. I've supported response to intervention and the refinement of personalized learning. School is a process. It's not a place. Success for our students in the decades to come will be defined by their ability to think differently. As a school board member, I have the privilege of hearing the stories of our people in our community, and this provides a roadmap to shape policy for the better.
Thank you. Next, Danielle Busby.
First, I looked at this question and, oops, thank you. I looked at this question, and I don't identify with the word "issue." I looked at it more as what opportunity motivated me to run for school board? And it's twofold. I was looking at the need for the board to reflect the changing faces of the community. And two, to look at the community as a whole and the district and the school board on a national and global level, instead of just minutely on the Edina experience level. I want to broaden that view and really prepare our children for a changing society. Thank you.
Next, Lionel Neville. Norville, I'm sorry.
Thank you. One of the issues that, I guess, really encouraged me to push forward, I started from a position of hope. I hope my kids do well. I hope my nephew succeed in school. I hope things went well, until I had to start contrast with reality. They weren't doing well. And it was alarming in the sense I didn't receive a phone call, I didn't receive a request for help, and that really encouraged me and motivated me to do more. I didn't want to sit in the background and be seen as that stereotypical angry black man. I decided, let's put our best foot forward and be a part of the solution in a creative way, as a parent and possibly a school board member. Thank you.
Next, David Goldstein.
I'm 50 some-odd years old, and if you ask me about who the most important people were in my life, one of them was my third-grade teacher, Ms. Steinkamp, and the other was my high school English teacher, Jean Feldman. Teachers are among, for all of us, almost all of us, the most important people in our lives, and I care about them. And as a community, the institution that's most important in our communal life is the public school. Both teachers and public schools are under more pressure than they should be in our society. I'd like to be a part of defending them. I'd like to be a part of providing better educations for our children and making sure that 50 some-odd years from now, my children, when asked about the most important people in life, say, as they already know they're going to, that these particular teachers changed their lives and made the good things in their lives possible. That's why I'm running.
Next, Mark Sparano.
Highest and best use. I'm a businessman. I'm a certified public accountant. I thought long and hard about throwing my hat into the ring. How can I best serve the community other than conquer Carnival? And I said to myself, governance is right up my alley. I'm the chief audit executive at US Bank. Prior to that, I was chief audit executive at Mellon Financial. I've been in risk management roles, public accounting throughout my whole career. It goes back to governance, policy setting, and here's the kicker. In financial services, it's all about transformation. Transformation of people, process, system, and that's exactly what's happening in Edina Public Schools. I would like to have a seat at that table, so we have my thumbprint on that. I cannot do it without the support of my lovely wife and my two children that go to Edina Public Schools, and I'm very happy to serve. I would be honored to serve in a governance capacity. Thank you.
Next, Vivian Talgater.
The Edina Public School System is one of the best in the nation. Even so, that does not mean that there isn't room for improvement. Over the 11 years that I have been involved with the Edina Public Schools, there have been times when I would have liked the system to have been different. Two recent instances, one impacting my sixth grader and one impacting my ninth grader, center on secondary programming choice and flexibility as well as personalized learning. These are some of the key initiatives of the district's 2012-2015 strategic plan. I understand that we are only partway into the plan and that change does not happen overnight, but in reviewing the strategic plan, I became concerned that many of the vision outcomes and deliverables set forth by the board have no clear measurable targets or timetables associated with them. A results-oriented approach is needed to ensure that the problems in the system that impacted my children are corrected and will not impact others. Thank you.
Next, Randy Meyer.
Back in 2001, when I was first elected to a board, a 1952 graduate of Edina was frustrated with a few things in the Edina system, asked me to run, and asked me if I knew anything about school board. And I said, well, my father and my grandfather served 40 years between the two of them. So there wasn't a particular issue that caused me to jump in at that time, but I did understand the importance of service to the school board. Since then, obviously, I've been very involved over the last 12 years, serving the last six as chair, and we have implemented many changes with measurable outcomes that have moved us forward in significant ways, whether it's with our facilities, with our curriculum, alt-comp, and going forward now with teacher evaluation in addition to implementing our new strategic plan. So I hope I get the privilege and opportunity to serve again, and I look forward to discussing the issues tonight. Thank you.
Next, Lisa O'Brien.
I am passionate about children and about particularly personalized learning. I believe that by identifying each child's strengths and needs and tailoring the curriculum and the instruction to those needs, that we can promote the most growth and we can also create a relationship, a strong relationship, between the teacher and the child. If we do this well, we will make tremendous strides in really reaching all our learners in our community. It is part of our strategic plan, and I would like to ensure that, as a school board member, that that continues to be part of our strategic plan and that it is enhanced in the future. I get very energized about strategic planning about children's issues. I've done it twice with the Greater Minneapolis Crisis Nursery, and I have seen how much growth can happen when that is done very well. So I am eager to immerse myself in learning the nuances of the district, to really work on strategic planning, and learn the strategic planning for 2015. Thank you.
Next, Gail Castro.
I'm both fascinated and concerned with use of technology in schools. That's my background. So of course, I was thrilled and excited when my first grader came home last year and had to use a computer to actually complete a homework assignment. But what happened next kind of started to concern me. Suddenly, he didn't want to come home and go outside and play with his friends. He wanted to sit down with his iPad or his iTouch or my computer and play learning app games. And at first, it seems innocent enough, but what I'm concerned about is that our kids are learning a fundamental skill, and that's communicating with other children. So I want to make sure that that's done in an appropriate way so that we move forward into the global economy and can teach our kids to compete in a global economy, but not forget the basics of human interaction and how to communicate effectively as human beings.
Thank you all. We will now ask questions submitted by the audience, and each candidate will have only 45 seconds to respond. I will read the question and start calling the names in rotation. If for some reason you lose track of what the question is, you may ask it again. Answers may confuse you as to what the question was. Who knows? The question is, the school board's job is governance, not management. What do you understand as the meanings of these words and the difference between them? And we'll start with Danielle Busby.
Governance is a managed execution of actions as a whole, from a professional corporate approach. It's regulated by laws from the state and from the federal level. Management is actually just, it's more human. It's not mandated by laws or regulations. It is just the simple human interaction, defining the need, and then figuring out how we're going to reach and complete that need. Thank you.
Next, Lionel Dorville. Ah, he wants to hear the question. The question is, the school board's job is governance, not management. What do you understand as the meanings of these words and the difference between them?
Governance is such an interesting term in that it is to oversee. So we're overseeing something, and the management is the day-to-day operation, which is the short-term view versus governance, the long-term view. And I think school board, in my understanding of their role, is to really manage the long-term view of Edina as a community towards 10, 15 years, whereas management is the day-to-day operation that we give the schools, that autonomy to take care of. Thank you.
Next, David Goldstein.
The day-to-day operations of the school are managed by teachers, who are professionals, in their classrooms, and by the administration and staff that are also professionals and very well-qualified by education and experience to handle these jobs. The school board is involved in working with those professionals to set the policies that help them deal with situations as they arise, to deal with the budget, to set overarching priorities, and of course, to select and supervise the superintendent. How those work in practice requires collegiality among the board and good working relationships between the staff and the board, and I would be for good working-
And next is Mark Sparano.
Governance is all oversight role in Edina Public Schools. In my opinion, it's to obviously oversight the day-to-day activities that happens via management, the rubber-hitting-the-road management, the teachers and administrators teaching our students. Here in Edina, I think the board has an additional role to go and garner input from external stakeholder communities, whether it be the city council, the parent-teacher organizations, other school districts, and bring that in the formulation of the policy and make sure we stay on our path with our strategic direction and we're effectuating our mission. Governance, oversight, management. Thank you.
Next, Lisa O'Brien.
I believe governance is the school board's responsibility to meet with the community, to hear their concerns, and then use those concerns with our judgment to create policies. The 20,000 feet is way up high, is where the policies are in governance. Management is having the administration and the teachers and the staff operationalize those policies and then implement them on the ground. So governance up high, the overarching plan and vision, and then management is on the ground.
Next, Gail Castro.
I agree with Lisa wholeheartedly. I too agree that governance is very much the 20,000-foot level. It's the umbrella, it's the overview and the setting of strategy that will move Edina Schools forward, whereas management is the day-to-day implementations or operations that the site administrators will actually put into practice. Thank you.
Next, Vivian Talgater.
Well, I pretty much have to echo everybody else's sentiments. Governance is providing the oversight. So we will be providing the vision, the strategy for the district, the policies and the rules and the regulations under which the teachers and the rest of the staff will function. The management portion of it would fall to the superintendent as well as the staff, the lead team that supports the superintendent, and that's really for the day-to-day operations. Thank you.
Next, Randy Meyer.
Thank you. The school board is a governance body. Policy is our key focus. In addition to that, we hire and fire the superintendent. We also have financial oversight. The management is the responsibility of the administration, whether it's at the building site or at the district site. Back when I joined the board in '01, we started a huge revision of the policy, which we actually completed last year. Many of those policies went back to 1970s, so that's been a great effort. Kathy Selis, who's in the crowd, put a lot of effort into that, along with Burt Letter. But it's a lot of work, and it's thankless work, frankly, rewriting policy, but it's the most important thing we can do to help move the district forward. Thank you.
And next, Regina Neville.
There are a lot of very good answers. The role of governance is to create policy, as has been referenced. The policy is to support and guide the vision of the district. It's informed by the community and also by the staff, so those two levels of support help our constant review of that policy. It's not just one set of documents that sits for occasional reference. It's a fluid process, and it's part of our development to reach the mission.
Thank you. The next question from the audience. Like most school districts, Edina has a large achievement gap between different student groups. What do you think should be done to close the gap? And we'll start with Lionel- And we'll start with Lionel Dorville.
You hit my passion. So what I think we can do in the interim is to create safeguard measures. I think we can start at looking at our GPA. We start at a 2.7 as our first sign of distress, 2.5 as a sign of intervention, and any student below a 2.0, which is a C-minus average, is when we really need to go into crisis mode. Bring in family at all levels, get the school involved and get the community at large involved in trying to see how can we get this student back up to par with everyone else. Thank you.
Next, Vivian Tallgater.
All right. So my understanding is that the question is about the achievement gap and what can we do about it. The school district is comprised of roughly nineteen percent students of color. After discounting the Asian population, which generally scores slightly lower than the white population for reading, but slightly higher for math, that still leaves roughly ten percent of the student body, which is not performing as well. The district has plans in place to address the achievement gap, including allotting more staffing resources. I think what is needed is clear definition of what the targeted improvement goals are with specific timelines for achievement. In addition, I believe that having an individualized education plan, not the one that's required by state law for disability children, but for everybody would be helpful. Thank you.
Next, Mark Sparano.
The achievement gap, I think, I would couch it as we have to preserve our strengths as we transform. The transformation here is the personalized learning for all students, one of the big three goals. I think that will address the achievement gap in the longer run. What it means for a board member, I think, is as we effectuate that strategy and try to close the achievement gap on an individual basis, student by student, we can't lose sight of the overall change hitting the rest of the student body. So we have to preserve that while we go more granular on each individual student. What it means to the board member is constant measurement, simple measurable, actionable, reportable, trackable goals, and it's going to wind up in the policy setting for the board such that everything we're doing here is sustained into the future and we transform for the better. Thank you.
Next, Danielle Busby.
I believe that the closing the gap is a very mountainous issue. It's been on a national level and it has been around for many, many, many years. I prefer to look at this as looking for opportunities to narrow and lessen the gap. And by continuing to, as a school board, being aware and addressing the concerns and the issues and testing for it and gathering data over it and trying to stay in front of the issue is where we need to be as a school board. Thank you.
Next, David Goldstein.
There's no easy answer to this. The problem's rooted in the history of race relations in this country and it's rooted in the challenges that generational poverty cause for individuals. And if we pretend otherwise, we're kidding ourselves. The answer is going to require coordination between the school districts and the state and the federal government. It's something we answer as a society, not just as a school. But as a school, we need to be focused on this. We need to measure things correctly. We need to always be committed and we need to treat kids as individuals and reach out and help everyone that we can.
Next, Lisa O'Brien.
Obviously, it's a very real issue, not only for our district, but for our state and our country. And I believe one of the tools that we can use to address the achievement gap is personalized learning. Because of my background, I look not only at group differences, but also individual student performance, assessing the child's needs, targeting the intervention, reassessing with metrics, and then reevaluating. If a child, if a particular child shows two years of growth in six months or a year, that is success. And we need to look at the targeted student success as well as the group differences. And if we're able to do personalized learning on the student level, I think we will make strides in closing the gap at the group level.
Next, Gail Castro.
This one is tough. You know what? I think the first thing that we need to do as a community is acknowledge that this achievement gap exists. I've been talking with a lot of people and people go, "No, not here in Edina." Not in Edina. It exists. And I think as a school board, we need to then turn to subject matter experts, quite frankly. We need to look to people who understand this and they can offer us suggestions on how best to accomplish that. As a school board, we can then put into policies that our administrators can then enact, we can monitor and measure against, and I think that's really only the first step that we can take to help close this gap.
Next, Regina Neville.
I agree with Gail. I do agree with Gail. The achievement gap is real. We need to own it. This requires, first of all, a response to equity. There needs to be an equitable opportunity for every student to learn. This includes personalized learning. It means fluidity of the learning process. Not every student will progress in the same way. And most importantly, partnerships. A partnership with parents, our community, and between our teachers as mentors and all of our students as learners, and also our students guiding all of us on a path to learning what we need to do differently.
And next, Randy Meyer.
Just last night, we spent some time working on this. The achievement gap is real. The common thread seems to be linked to free and reduced lunch. Last fall, we deployed some extra dollars for some mass support in the elementary level. Our birth-to-grade-five study will also help us to identify additional ways we can support families before they get to kindergarten. And as our response through intervention program has taught us, if we can get the kids up to speed at the younger ages, they don't have the problems going further through our system. So, thank you.
Thank you all. The third question from the audience is, "What do you expect to be the most important issue to confront the board during the next term?" And we'll be starting with Randy Meyer.
Thank you. Obviously, implementing the strategic plan is a key initiative, moving us forward. But in addition to that, we have a very, very talented staff. And I think the challenge is going to be to keep that staff, particularly the administrative staff and the principals, within the district as we move forward, both due to retirement and also due to other opportunities. And there's also going to be a big step in replacing Rick Dressen at some point. And those are big shoes to fill. So, thank you.
Next, Mark Sparano.
I think in the immediate future, the biggest issue facing the board will be all stripes, all types and all stripes of infrastructure, our student growth, our refurb and our remodeling and our expansion of our facilities. I think on all fronts, it'll come back to infrastructure and it'll translate to dollars for the taxpayers. And I really think that's going to be of paramount importance in the very near term. Thank you.
Next, Vivian Tallgater.
I believe that the most important issue confronting the board in the next term will be how to assign the resources to implement the all-for-all mission. As mentioned, there's a lot of stuff going on and a lot of that will require different resources, not only the money, but also time from staff, collaborative work. And in order to really make a change, those are going to be the things that the board will need to take a look at. Thank you.
Next, Gail Castro.
You know what? All of these are good answers and quite frankly, that I'm not a board member, I'm not privy to certain information. But personally for me, I think one of the huge issues we're going to have to face is safety. Whether it's building safety, whether it's school bus safety, whether it's collecting data and distributing data of our students. I mean, let's face it, the world is changing at Mach's speed. And I think to be able to stay one step ahead of that, to ensure that our children are safe and that the data that is being distributed about them is appropriate, is going to be a huge challenge for ours and every school district.
Next, Lionel Dorville.
One of the most pressing issues, and Randy hit on it, is closing that achievement gap within that free and reduced lunch group versus their white and Asian counterpart, which within reading, there's a forty percent gap. And over the course of the next five years, it would be the board's task to look at how can we create ways and measures and bring in those resources to close in that gap? Because we're looking at, within that population, nine percent of our total education population and growing. So I think that's going to be one of our pressing issues, is closing that forty percent gap between Asian and white youth against their counterparts, black and I think it's a twenty percent difference within Latino youth. Thank you.
And next, Regina Neville.
Our opportunity right now is for successful implementation of the ongoing secondary study and what's begun with the birth-to-grade-five study. We're asking amazing questions and examining what we're doing as a district at every grade level. So we have an opportunity to use this study to close the achievement gap, to work together as a team. And how we listen to each other and how we take the steps forward to actually shape action with what we've heard will help define a real difference.
Next, Danielle Busby.
I believe the prominent issue would be trying to get the community to think outside of the Edina bubble. The Edina bubble of, "We've been excellent and we've been excellent in the history and we're still excellent and we don't need to change." Convincing the community that change needs to happen in order for us to maintain and progress forward with that excellence needs to happen.
Next, David Goldstein.
We're entering a period where everything is up for grabs. Should we stay with the current model or do we go K through eight in one building, nine through twelve in another, or some other permutation? What do we do with class times and block periods? What do we do with technology and all the opportunities and risks that those offer? There needs to be careful discussion of that involving the community. The biggest challenge we face in Edina is that this is a community that demands excellence, which is wonderful, but it's also a community that will not accept failure. And how you innovate without having some tolerance for risk is a real problem. So we have to figure out how we're going to do that as a community and support each other.
And next, Lisa O'Brien.
I think one of the things that we learned with the secondary study from the community is that the community wants more flexibility and more choice. We really need to look at how we are learning and what we are learning and doing that in different ways. And we also are, we have changing demographics and how are we going to address the changing demographics and how are we going to adapt our curriculum and our instruction to meet their needs?
Thank you all. Now it's time for a lightning round. Each candidate will be asked a different question, which I will draw at random. Candidates, please answer your question in only one sentence. And there's more questions in here than nine, so it's completely random, right? And we'll start with Gail Castro. And your question is, "At school board meetings, there is one opportunity for members of the public to address the board. Do you feel the public ought to have more chances to speak to particular topics at the meeting?"
I believe that the public has the opportunity to approach the school board at any point in time. So at one session during the meeting is probably appropriate.
Thank you. Next is Regina Neville's question. "Should school board members be subject to term limits?"
If one would be the term limit, I would have to disagree. That's a sentence. Thank you, John. That is one sentence.
The next question comes to Lisa O'Brien. "Should the school district look for more ways to connect Edina's large senior population with the schools?"
The Edina community has a huge resource and talent in our community. And yes, getting them involved would be very important and world peace.
The next question goes to Randy Meyer. "Is it a good idea for the school district to consider private sponsorship of school facilities, such as Coleman Field, as a way to raise revenue for the schools?"
This has been a topic of much discussion. I think it needs to be carefully planned, carefully considered, and also covered up during the school day, which is how we've handled the situation up till now.
Even though that was more than one sentence, we'll let it stand.
It was a run-on.
This question is for Vivian Tallgater. "Do you favor Edina's policy of students bringing their own devices to school? Or do you think the district should supply tablets or laptops for every student?"
I believe that the route that the Edina Public School system has chosen with the "bring your own device" is the right route to take.
The next question goes to Lionel Dorville. "Should all students who live in Edina be able to attend Edina Public Schools?"
I think that's... Yes.
The next question goes to David Goldstein. "Do you support the schools starting before Labor Day?"
Given my own family's traditions and the fact that we have a son who started college on August 30th this year, I personally find a change to starting before Labor Day to be very difficult for our family. And from that perspective, I'm against it, semi-colon. But I do understand that there is a case for starting before Labor Day and I think the community has to give it some serious consideration, comma. But it needs to be part of a statewide solution and involve community input. Period.
The next question is for Mark Sparano. "Spanish used to be taught in the elementary schools, but it was eliminated. Should this decision be revisited?"
I think language arts in the Edina Public School is a key attribute and I think across all levels, we need to examine the languages. Yes, it needs to be revisited.
And the last question goes to Danielle Busby. "Most teachers get their certification through a lengthy education process. Should there be alternative pathways to becoming a teacher?"
Yes, I believe there should be alternative pathways because I know of a few people, including myself, that have wanted to pursue a teaching role. And I think that we need to be a little bit more fluid and flexible with our avenues to pursuing a teaching career.
Thank you. You all did very well. We'll return to the audience written questions and you will have forty-five seconds to answer them. The first question is, "What groups will you reach out to for input on decisions and why?" And we'll start with Lisa O'Brien.
Edina has had a long history of being very collaborative and for not being hierarchical. The board and the administration and the teachers and the community and the parents, their views are all equally important. So I would continue to reach out to the community, to our teachers, and also to then look for experts in the fields for things like closing the achievement gap or working with children of poverty or children who are at risk to help guide our policies in the district.
Next, Randy Meyer.
I think it depends upon the issue involved. What's most important is that all of the... What's most important is that all of the groups that are affected by decisions are involved in their decision-making. And I think we've been pretty good at the district of incorporating site decisions at the sites, and many of you as parents have been involved with that, and also making sure that we're including the seniors and other folks who do not have kids in the district, but also help support the district financially. Thank you.
Next, Danielle Busby.
The groups that I would be reaching out to would be in a sense of trying to improve the vertical communication channels between the district, the community, and the school and the site level. I'd be looking for feedback from families, trying to provide opportunities for families to come to us, come to the school board, and be able to share their ups and their downs within the community so we can better understand the personal needs and individual needs of the community.
Vivian Talgater.
I believe that there needs to be more of a town hall type forum for people to bring their concerns to the board. In that situation, then, it would be open to the entire community to come and voice their opinions about things. More specifically, then, if you were going to target specific groups, it would be the stakeholders, but it would be making sure that you are asking their opinions before you have started to set any options forward, before you've eliminated any possibilities. So a two-pronged approach. Thank you.
Vivian Neville. I'm sorry. I looked, Regina Neville.
We can work together.
I changed her name.
That's all right. One of the guiding questions that I have when we're looking at policy or any kind of change is, is the welcome mat out? Have we really invited everyone to have a voice at the table? And what does that invitation look like? It may need to be more than a blurb on a newsletter or on the website. We need to be active in seeking out representation from our changing demographics and everyone who's a part of our community and our school system.
Next, David Goldstein.
Absolutely, everyone. There's a good reason why this is an elected position, and I'd want to hear from everyone. But particularly, schoolteachers and parents, because they have such important stakes in this process in our schools. And then also, the students, you know, particularly high school students, because they're there, they're mature enough to know a lot about what's going on and add to the dialogue, but they don't get to vote and they don't always get as much of a voice as they should. But also, kids at all levels. I'd like to hear what they think is going on and what they need and what they think they want.
Next, Mark Sparano.
I would definitely prioritize students as a key stakeholder to garner input from, inclusive of seniors, lifelong learners. I would definitely prioritize that. Secondly, I would go to parents vested interests in the parents. Great, great partnership in the Edina Public Schools. I would definitely garner their feedback constantly. And then I would constantly ping back to administrators and staff outside of the board meeting, because I really would like to get the pulse of what's going on and understand how the change management and the transformation that we're going through is impacting our administrators and our staff.
Next, Gail Castro.
While I agree that it is subject matter dependent, I think it's absolutely vital to reach out to students. I agree. But even young kids, you know, I have a first and second grader, and it is amazing what they know. And they may not articulate it well, but I think all students. I also think the businesses, we have a tremendous wealth of business leadership here in the Twin Cities, and they can really provide input as to what's happening in the business world and how we can apply that to schools, and certainly, community and teachers, of course.
And next, Lionel Dorville.
Currently in my role within the Department of Correction, this is what I do. And I think it's important, based on what we're looking at, based in a targeted perspective, because to bring everyone in is just to get everyone in the room to become frustrated. I definitely think we need to do a targeted approach, and I really like the thought of parents. Bring it back to the parents, because as the parents go, the youth go, our community goes. And then, parents are taking care of their elders, their parents, and we really need to look at where it starts, what's that glue that's holding everything together. So I do feel that it should be a targeted approach, inclusive versus exclusive. Thank you.
Thank you all. The next question from the audience. Budgets have been difficult for over a decade. What creative ideas do you have to deal with this problem? And we'll start with David Goldstein.
Well, I don't think there are any easy ingenious fixes to that. I think the fix is to have responsible government that is very careful in spending money and deciding whether things are important or not, and then that properly funds what we need to fund. There's no gimmicks that's going to fix it. Thank you.
And next, Lisa O'Brien.
There are no easy answers for the budget constraints that we have as a district and as a state. I believe that we need to look at our programs, make sure we have the proper metrics to assess whether we're actually having success, and see if there's a real cost-benefit analysis when we see these programs. And then we can use our resources wisely. Thank you.
Next, Gail Castro.
This one is huge. I think first, we need to cut up our credit cards. Isn't that the truth? You know, we need to apply to schools and government, just like we apply to our own personal finances. If you don't have the money, you don't spend it. So with that means setting priorities. Where do we need to be spending our dollars? And how best can we utilize that, make sure there is that cost-benefit ratio? And if there's no money, there's no spending.
Next, Lionel Dorville.
I think we have to commend the board currently, who have been managing and guiding to where we are at currently, and I definitely think we are doing a great job so far, because we're addressing our needs moving into the next generation of learning, and that is paramount to where we are. So as long as we have an open and transparent process throughout, I think the community at large will help set that tone in that direction, along with the board's help.
Next, Randy Meyer.
I think we've worked hard on trying to make the budgeting process a very transparent process. And to really evaluate, how are we best, how can we best spend our dollars? So it's okay to cut one program or replace it with another if it's a better use of those funds. It's going to continue to be a challenge, day in, day out. We were in close session last night, trying to figure out how to get some contracts settled. It's not an easy task, but you have to push through it and work with the resources you have. Thank you.
Next, Mark Sparano.
Creativity and budgeting in my line of work gets me in jail. So I don't think there's any creative ways with a school board budget, with a school district budget, in my opinion. I am a CPA, okay? I think it's going through every single line item, make sure the current programs and the new programs align to the strategic mission, and it's slogging through constantly, on an iterative basis, constantly over and over, to make sure at the bottom line, the budget is aligned with the mission, and that's where we get a little bit of creativity. Thank you.
Next, Regina Neville.
We do need to work within defined resources while we recognize that the needs are changing and in some cases, the needs are growing. So I commend our staff, lead team, for managing our budget well and maintaining a healthy fund balance. The board will continue to maintain goals for a healthy fund balance. We'll need to give up some things that we're used to in order to focus funds where they're more needed.
Next, Danielle Busby.
I concur with most of the answers here. I would definitely, we need to make sure that we don't spend the money if we don't have it. We definitely need to define the resources and trying to identify where our money would be best spent. And that depends on each year as we go forward, the needs of the students. Thank you.
Next, Vivian Talgater.
The school district has a policy, or the board has a policy of maintaining a six percent fund balance with a two percent cash flow, so roughly eight percent of the general fund. And I believe that that is a fiscally sound policy. The school district is one of only three in the state that maintains the triple-A credit rating. And so I commend the folks who work in the finance area, the business resources area of our district for keeping our district fiscally sound. I also commend the board for their oversight in that regard. The question about how to fix it, again, there's no easy answer as to how you could increase the revenue dollars, but I believe that it is our responsibility to make sure that we don't spend more than we have. Thank you.
Thank you all. Our next question is, what role should technology play in K-12 education? How can we measure outcomes? And we'll start with Vivian Talgater.
Okay. The eLearning Squared program, which hit my children in sixth and ninth grade, is, I was skeptical about it at first. The bring-in-a-device and the research basically shows that unless you back that up with the infrastructure and the teacher training in order to support that technology, your program will fail. You won't reap the educational benefits from those devices. So I am very happy to see that the district is allotting the dollars for the teacher training, the professional development. I believe seventy-five thousand dollars was allotted for the school year for that. Thank you.
Next, David Goldstein.
Nobody really knows the answer to that question yet. We only know that technology offers opportunities, and we know from our own lives at the office or at work, that technology is something that our children are going to have to be able to use productively. As we explore the best way to use these opportunities, we're going to have successes and failures, and I think recognizing that, the district has properly started to explore this, using pilot programs, trying to come up with measurement and assessment tools, and assessing and going somewhat deliberately but carefully. That's the best we can do right now.
Next, Randy Meyer.
The role of technology in education is going to continue to evolve. The flipped classroom will have the highest level of impact over the next five years. And what this is, is the kid watches the lectures, the kids watch the lectures the night before class starts. When they show up in class, they ask questions about the lecture they watched and do their homework. This is going to have a huge impact. Not only can the teachers in Edina Public Schools look and see who watched the video, they can also look and see where they stopped in the video so they didn't understand a particular topic or point. It's going to have a huge impact in how we move forward. Thank you.
Next, Regina Neville.
Technology is a tool to support education. It's definitely part of our world and will be more a part of the world that all of our students are entering. So as we use it, we need to stay flexible. We will need to adapt how we use it and how it works, and we'll need to continue learning ourselves as our students work with this device. But again, it supports everything that we do in the classroom.
Gail Castro.
My hot button here. This one is interesting. You know, I think, like everyone has said, technology is vitally important to the future successes of our kids. They're going to use it at home, they're going to use it in schools. I think the way they use it has just got to be monitored in such a way, probably by subject matter experts, people who can teach these kids how to effectively search for information on the internet, how to effectively, you know, complete problem solving. As for measurement, I'm not sure. Helping kids understand consequences of using technology, helping kids, you know, be tested that they still have verbal communication skills, because again, this technology thing, it's so important, but they just have to understand that it is just a tool. It is not their life.
Next, Danielle Busby.
It's hard to follow what Gail just said, because exactly, that's exactly how I feel. And so I'm like, should I just repeat what she just said? Technology is here to stay, and we just need to figure out how we can keep some sanity, keep the realism of our kids so that they're still playing outside and they're still engaging each other and they're still being creative with their minds, not just with the computer. And to measure, we just need to make sure that we're measuring how it's impacting their social skills, how it's impacting their verbal skills, how it's impacting their language skills, and how they approach other people. So I concur with everybody. Thank you.
Lisa O'Brien.
I want to make sure that we realize that there are almost as many different learning styles as there are children in our district, and that not every child will be able to handle a flipped class or be able to read on a computer and not have a book. I want to make sure that we understand that we need to have be personalized learning, using technology as a tool, so that we can support every learner in our district.
Next, Lionel Dorville.
And looking at the role of technology, we need to understand, technology is a continuum of service. Because currently, we want more teachers in the classroom, we want smaller class sizes, but we don't want to take teachers away from the classroom and have technology be that overriding goal that students are learning from. I think Edina is great in thinking of this from a forefront perspective and preparing youth, our young people, for the next stage in their life, which is college or whatever higher means they choose to attain. But I just think technology should be seen as a continuum of service that can add to what is occurring within the bricks and mortar building. Thank you.
And next, Mark Sparano.
I think technology is a fantastic opportunity. We've all had technology in our schools, you know, the mammograph machines now, high-tech now, right? So it's a great opportunity. It causes the board to play steward and make sure that the technology in the district is used appropriately that matches back to serving the needs of our students and used appropriately with all the controls and all the data privacy that goes along with technology. It's another item for the board to have to consider in policy setting now and into the future. I think it's a great enabler, and hopefully, the technology implemented well in the Edina Public Schools will help with some efficiency and help with our budget question that we had earlier.
Thank you all. I've moderated a lot of forums, and I'm very impressed with the candidates. You have kept within a forty-five second time. Amazing. Very impressive. That's all the time we have for our audience questions, but we do have time now for you to give us your closing remarks. And we will, again, do it in a random order, but we'll start with David Goldstein. You have a minute this time.
Thank you. First, thank you again to the league. Thank you for all of you for attending tonight. Running for the board has been a wonderful experience. I don't want to minimize our challenges, but I've got to say, this is a wonderful community. We have a great school, and having an opportunity to learn more about it, to meet many of you, to hear about your passion for your kids, for your community, for the school, has just been a powerful experience, which I have enjoyed sharing. This has been a great forum tonight. I've loved hearing to what all the other candidates say, but I have regretted the very abbreviated periods to respond. I hope that you will engage with me and with all of us as the campaign continues, especially those of you who have differing opinions, because it's fun to discuss them and for all of us to learn together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Vivian Talgater.
I would like to thank the League of Woman Voters for providing this opportunity for us to get together this evening. I believe in Edina Public Schools. If I didn't, I would not have chosen to do open enrollment from Eden Prairie eleven years ago and then move into the district nine years ago. I support Edina Public Schools. If I didn't, I would not have volunteered at the schools and at the district level to the extent that I have. I care about Edina Public Schools. If I didn't, I wouldn't be up here tonight in front of all of you as a candidate for the school board. Edina has a great school district. My four children are getting a quality education. However, I believe Edina Public Schools can be made even better, and I ask for your vote on November 5th to work towards that end. If you would like more information, you can visit my website, www.talgaterforedinaschoolboard.org. Thank you for supporting our schools.
Thank you. Next- Next, we'll have Lionel Dorville.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, Edina, for having this forum. I see these kids every day. I work for the Department of Correction, Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, so I know the importance of education. If we don't do something now to capture all kids, we are looking at a dangerous trend for our society and our young people. When we talk about technology, we talk about budget, we talk about finances, it's all back to the root of why we're all here, which is capturing our young people and making sure we're getting the most out of their education, which we hope happens. And for me, it's just that, our young people, if we get back to learning, teaching, not to the test, but actually educating in our kids and believing that our district is strong enough, that education for all is paramount, and we put in those safeguards to save everyone, I really think as a community, we can pull together and do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Randy Meyer.
Thank you for the League for hosting this event tonight. I like the slightly different format. It's been a privilege to serve the school district over the past 12 years, and it's been an honor. Edina Public Schools has exciting times ahead. We continue to roll out our all-for-all strategic plan, continue to work hard to close the achievement gap, and also continue to maintain our high standards of excellence. I will continue my strong commitment to our district, leading on responsible financial management, good policy, and working with the community to keep our district moving ahead.
Thank you.
I've been honored to serve you and ask for your vote November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Danielle Busby.
I'm sitting here self-reflecting, and all I want to do is have the opportunity to serve the community. I want to set an example for my two children, to let them know that you have to give back and you have to step up, and you have to get out of your comfort zone and serve your community as best you can. On the education level, I believe that that's the first point of impact, of influence, and so that's why I'm choosing to run for the school board. Please vote for me. Hopefully, you can find something to connect with within me for November 5th, and website is www.dmbusby.com. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa O'Brien.
Over the course of 150 years, Edina has earned a strong reputation for excellence in education. As a school board member, it is my responsibility to help safeguard that reputation. I believe my role is to help the district prioritize among the hundreds of well-meaning ideas, so that, because if everything's high priority, then nothing really can be. So I believe that our highest priority is the intellectual and educational growth of each student in our district. I've benefited from public schools my entire life, from kindergarten to graduate school. It's time for me to give back, so others can also benefit from the things I have. I would appreciate your vote on November 5th. My website is www.lisoo'Brien.org. I'd like to be your school board member, so that I can ask the questions you would ask if you were in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Regina Neville.
Once again, thank you to the League, and it's exciting to run with a slate of engaged candidates, and I'm grateful for what the Edina Schools have meant for my family and for any role that I've had to play a part of it. I'm a qualified and experienced candidate. I'll provide continuity and expertise to make a continued positive impact on Edina during a second term of service. So I ask that you please vote for me on November 5th, and my website is wwwreginanevill.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Gail Castro.
Thanks for coming out to listen to us tonight. I think there are a couple of big reasons why I'm running for school board. One, I'm vested. When we moved back to Minnesota, I had the opportunity to go anywhere, and we chose Edina because of the schools. I've got young kids. We're here for the next 11 years, so I need to care about what's happening, not only for my children, but for your children as well. I want my kids to be proud to say they graduated from Edina, and I want that education to open doors for them into the world. Number two, you know, quite frankly, I think I've got the skills to do well on the school board. Again, I have a strong sales and marketing background. I'm committed to the kids. I also have time available to do school board. Quite frankly, this is an opportunity for me to give back. I've got the time available, and I'm interested in doing it. And finally, I'm excited. I look forward to serving Edina, and I believe that we can continue to excel, and I want to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Mark Sparano.
I have personally seen the good, bad, and the ugly in my personal experience with education, going from the '70s to the '80s and '90s, from preschool all the way to executive MBA. I want to take those personal experiences and personalize it even more. When my wife Nancy and I moved into Edina three years ago, we chose this school district, not a house outside of this school district, but this school district, because we wanted our kids to be in public schools, and we fully believe in that. My wife Nancy volunteers constantly at Normandale and Concord. I want to give back. High ends are best used, like I said before. My work experience over the last 25 years, governance policy setting, dealing with stakeholders, and being a steward, that's what I do, and I want to apply those talents to the board. I want to preserve our strengths as we transform. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for the evening. This forum has been taped for broadcast on Edina Community Channel 16 and also on the City of Edina website. I thank the audience for coming. I thank the League of Women Voters, Edina, for sponsoring the forum, and I would like to especially thank our candidates for participating and for willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I think they deserve a hand.